Let the record reflect that I've taken role that all members of the utility board are present this afternoon. Having a quorum, we will proceed. The minutes from the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, then the minutes will stand approved as posted. And when I called the meeting to order, I called it by the wrong date. It is August the sixteenth. I was looking at the wrong feed here, so it is August the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So we have plenty of unfinished business this afternoon, so we will start with water quality testing.
Everything's fine. Everything's looking good. No issues. I've not got the latest report from the Moores, but. Last report I got in June is fine. Everything's good. It's around a couple of days behind. He gets this this week.
They must have missed you because I got mine.
I didn't get mine.
Yeah, I got it. I mean, everything is fine, but I did get it.
I've been getting a lot of junk emails that might be.
Okay, A R P discussion. Really, we haven't spent all the money that was allocated to us, so it's still gathering interest. So we're, you know, once we get, you know, started with some of our projects, the money's already there, so. But it is all accounted for now, so there is nothing other than the interest that can be used for projects. Five-year plan. Any additions to the five-year plan?
We'll say next time there will be some changes due to it. There are references of nine and ten and some additional projects to add to it, so. I'll make that network, Mike. We'll get them changed out, but you'll review it.
Okay. Mike, later on in the agenda, I know that you're going to give us some updates. We'll revisit this item when we get to that, okay? All right. So Burgess and Nyepal Water and Wastewater System Improvements Project. Mike?
The wastewater projects actually was moved and will be on. September. Yeah, September meeting at I G D C. They, no changes did. They just wanted some clarification, so it was submitted. The water projects. We submitted it and they came back. I G D C won funding projects because.
The rates were too low. So I know Randy had spoken with, well, several people to see what we could do, and it sounded like if we wanted to get the. Money from them, which was three percent, twenty-year money, the rates would have to be point six percent of what your M H I is. Which is around twenty-eight dollars a month.
And that's water only?
That's water only.
Yes. So. Yeah, I was a little disappointed. I spoke to the. I'm assuming that I'll say this right, the chairman of the funding committee down there. Because we get banged every time because we have such cheap water rates. And for years, we had the lowest water rate of any city in West Virginia. Well, we're now the third lowest because there are two cities below us that have two hundred people. And their water rate's cheaper than ours. But a real city. That has, you know, a sizable population, we're still the cheapest water in West Virginia. And I argued with him. I said, you know what? I said, you try really hard to provide the best water you can. And keep it at a reasonable rate, and then you get punished for it, which we do. And so he said, you know, I agree with you, but he said, that's the way it is because. When your water rates are so cheap, they assume that you can fund these things yourselves. Instead of getting the grant money or the forgivable loans or, you know, the cheap interest rates. And so the Vienna water rate is six tenths of the median household income. And that's, I mean, I don't know what neighboring cities are, but we're, we're the bottom. Okay, we are the cheapest water of a, of a city. And the other thing, you know, when Mike filled out all the paperwork, we applied for U S D A funding. And unfortunately, they kicked us for that one because we have more than ten thousand people. We, according to the latest figures. We have ten thousand six hundred people. So in the last twenty years, the city of Vienna has had a negative population of less than a hundred people. I think that's fantastic. In, in West Virginia, to have only lost a hundred people in the last twenty years, we're doing good. But because we don't, because we have more than ten thousand people, we are above that cutoff for this particular U S D A funding. There are other funding streams out there, and they were very forthcoming with the three percent twenty-year loan. But unfortunately, they want us to combine projects and go for a larger number. And so that's where the five-year plan comes in. Because I, I mean, based on my conversation, they'll fund it. I mean, I don't think there's any question. They'll fund it. They, they know that we're a good city. But they want us to relook at combining some of these projects. My issue with this is, you know, we got a million-dollar earmark sitting out there that we were given. It's been through appropriations. Where's the funding? And that's it. You can't make plans until you know when that money's going to drop. I mean, we've waited three years now, over three years, for the flap grant to drop. And now it's here, September the tenth, it'll drop, but. How do you make plans to do multi-million dollar projects when, yes, you've been awarded the money, but where is it? So we're going to have to hold on. We'll have to wait until we get some kind of notification that, you know, that funding is going to come. And then we'll go back, you know, we'll, we'll reapply again, see what happens.
Hey, I misunderstood, but I, you saying the wastewater project.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the Trump project?
Correct.
Okay, because then we started talking about water rates.
Right, right.
So I was kind of.
Yeah, they, yeah, they both went in. The sewer was just, there were some questions they had. It was worked out, so they'll just be. Next month's meeting. There was no comments other than what they had, so it should pass next month. The water is the one that we had asked for I G D C and then asked for U S D A. Neither of them had funded at that low of a cost, so we need to go back and look if we can combine it to be able to get to that three percent.
Okay, great, thanks. I understand.
I think the other thing too, Kim, that needs to be brought up again is. Because of the way our water and sewer are structured, the water's five dollars, sewer's three times that. You can't do one without the other, and I mean, it's just, that's where, you know, the numbers get large. So anyway, we'll wait and see what happens, Mike, but thank you for your efforts. You know, it's, I don't know, they're, they're, they're funding lots and lots of projects right now. I'm not sure what Huntington, I think, got a hundred and seventy million dollars. That's unbelievable. You know, and, you know, even the little city of Pensboro has gotten multi-million dollar grants. So the money's coming in. It's just. I don't know. Figure out what, what our avenue is, so. Any questions on the water and wastewater? All right.
There, they talked about the water rate, point six, saying, what's the cutoff?
Yeah, the point six is, that's the cutoff. So we're, right now, the city's about point four-two percent. So when we looked at the million, what was it, three, three and a half million dollar project, it, it was only going up to like point four-eight.
Add projects to it, borrow more money to raise rates to cover the loan. At where you're.
Did you follow that logic right there? We, we can't give you what you want, but if you go borrow four and a half million, which is the number.
Yeah.
Then, oh, we can probably help you out.
Yeah. Raise rates at the point oh-six.
It's, yeah, it's crazy.
That's where it goes back to the five-year plan, which is changes, it'll be done to it, so. You get punished for being good.
Yes. Okay, anything else? All right. Dredging of pond run and the dry dams.
Again, I think we're just waiting for the issue about money, funding for it, again. So once we get funding for it, I, we can roll with that project.
And we're still waiting.
Yeah. Absolutely. I, I, it's old summer, I think, I just keep driving across pond run. I thought, man, what a year to do that project. It's just drives up, and it just. You could just be scraping up powder. It wouldn't be no mud whatsoever, and just. Now, once we get it, it'll be able to just rain cats and dogs, so, you know, it'd be flooded all the time. Won't be able to get another duck, so. That's just, it's luck.
Twenty-eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements, Phase One.
No update on that. We'll be applying for funding here over the next two months or so.
Okay. Lens Service Line Inventory Update.
Again, we got the, the federal part done. We're just working on the state issue stuff, so. Once you get it completed, it should be done. Mike, I was going to have meetings this week. Both got busy. We'll meet next week, discuss what we have to finish up in the state. And get that submitted out, so.
So you mentioned the state. Mike, they gave us an extension on the M S four permit process. But I didn't see where it said how long they extended it for.
Yeah, they, I don't know either, but they actually even pulled the draft. They had, had a draft of M S four permit. They've actually pulled it back, so I would say it's probably months away. Or we can get another draft out.
Okay. Skater Update.
Been a difficult one. Their, this company again is having the same issue everybody else has, or. Either having difficulty retaining employees. It seems like. Hire a guy, he leaves. Hire another guy, he come up. It's been very slow, disappointing. So, but it is moving forward. We do have one of the meters in, well, houses working on there to. Install some control boards. I still got Twelve Street to finish up on the sewer side, and. Um, they haven't set the computers yet, have they? Yeah, so they're waiting on that, so. This is a work environment at this time. Can't contain employees, so. Forty, forty-five. Since last November.
Meter Replacement Project.
That's been going pretty well. Actually, we were over fifteen hundred meters set. We finished everything up and over in town, including commercial up to Twenty-second Street. We're going to pull off, start heading to Greenmont, so we can have a lot of dead zones in Greenmont this time with our data collection, so we're going to start Greenmont, start working way back down. Try to eliminate the meters that's been going dead on us, so. Had estimated a few bills, and we don't like doing that, so. Work crews been outstanding. Hadn't had any issues except trying to actually find the meters, because it'd been since a long time since we read them annually and had to dig them up, so we've been. They mailed textures, find the meters and. So it's kind of slowed us down a little bit, but we'll get to Greenmont, sort of heading way back down. Our three individuals working on them and doing a great job. Found one snake so far, so it's not too bad, so. New guy, lit up big snake in there, he called it back down, said, I don't do that. I can't say anything, because I do the same thing. So I'm like, nope, somebody else did that one, so. And then Jason rushed down and got a snake, take it out and release it, so it was this little bar snake, but. Overgrown fishing worm is what he called it, but it was, it was classified as a snake, so. But besides that, no bees, just a bunch of spiders and a couple of snakes, so.
Have you compared this year's water usage to previous years? With the drought?
I don't want to get, I don't want to look at that yet, so.
With, with the drought, I know that my water bill has doubled. Okay?
Pool-wise. I'm like you. I've, my bill to Parkersburg has gone up substantially because I have had to fill pool up, and everybody else is too, because. Evaporation rate this year is huge. I mean, I'll lose inch, two inches a day in my pool, so.
Yeah, that, that's not even the pool, it's the garden.
I don't have a garden.
Got a big garden in the backyard, and I mean, you water that thing every day, or they die. You know. But what are the chances of your water bill being exactly the same two months in a row, two to the penny?
Slim, very slim. That has to do with the meter failing and not reading right, so. That's part of the meter project, so. That's why I said had to estimate a few because of dead reads, so. Don't worry, we'll get you. When we pull that meter, we'll get you.
Oh, I got, yeah, I got. Now, I'm waiting on my, I'm waiting on my tomato credit, you know, because I'm watering my tomatoes. Do you give that credit by tomato or? Green bean or carrots?
I get a tomato.
How much do you get?
I don't think anybody's ever got.
Because it's not going in the ground. There's no.
You're not giving tomatoes, can't buy, get wet cookies, so I, you know, you guys know credits. That's the way it works, so. No brownies.
I'll give you tomatoes off mine.
All right.
Pretty good, fifteen hundred meters so far, and the amount of time we've been working on it, and we do have an ample supply of meters in stock. That issue is over, so we're, we're continuing right on. So a question is, Randy, is what are we doing with the old tops? Because I'm getting a whole garage full of old meter tops and antennas, bins, cyclone bins, I'm full. There's no value to them. A lot of people either don't have the system we had, so.
They're plastic, aren't they?
They are.
There's no brass, there's no.
No. So, who want to dispose them?
I would think if, if we can put them on gov deals and say that we've got two thousand meter heads.
Yeah.
There might be, I mean, for a smaller city, you know, that would be a great thing. I'd rather, I'd rather try that than I would throw them away.
But issue, they're not, they're non-functional. That's.
That's the problem.
Yeah. The meter heads aren't the value. It's the brass that's in the base, so that's where you value it.
Put them in those cars we got for sale out there and just.
Good. We got truck beds we get in there. Yeah, that's your bonus package. I don't know, but. It really, there's no value to them.
Buy Jeep Liberty and get.
I, I would suggest, I mean, I'll talk to the distributor. I, I know he's going to tell me we don't want them. Because the buyers are dead in them or whatever, but I'll do a rec, a recreational quest for them to dispose of them, but that's, I think that's what needs to happen to them. Okay.
Okay.
That's our U also.
Something that don't work.
I, I know, that's.
Lori, why don't you reach out to Megan? And, and tell Megan that we have a situation here and ask her if they would have anyone that they know of. That would have any interest in those things. Okay? I mean, they've got so many members. All right, anything else under unfinished business? All right, new business. Wells nine and ten, please.
I did have bid items on rehab wells nine and ten. There's two contractors that bid on the project. Jimmy Harbor Construction come in at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. United Construction come in at two hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four thousand. So estimated engineers' cost on that was two eighty. So I reviewed them, Mike, you reviewed them. We will go with the lowest bid, two twenty-seven eight eight four. I spoke to contractor. He just, he's ready to start. There will be some issues. The wells can be rehabbed right now, but. There's electronic circuit panel boxes inside. It's. One contractor says four and fourteen days out before I get that control box, so. What we'll do is go in and start rehabbing the buildings, that's the new roof, pull the wells, rehab them, the new well pumps back in. And then keep producing with them, and then when the control panels come in, the electronics of it, then we'll shut one down at a time, and then redo the electric. Okay, but I think we can get roofs and the wells now, which is good, so.
Question.
Sure.
So since you can't do, you don't have the electric control box now, so this price, if it does not conclude, would that?
It, it does.
It does, so we're paying for it now, and then whenever.
Well, we'll, we'll pay it. Like, they'll make some middles on it. Like, whenever we do the wells, they'll submit that in, we'll pay for that function. But the whole project won't be completed until everything's completed, so.
Yes, I, I thought this project was going to be a lot more. But then I went back and I looked through my notes, and this is like five thousand dollars more than what.
Yeah, yeah, I was real pleased with the pricing, so. They're both, both individuals qualified companies, so. Most of these companies anymore, I know Harper, I know United Construction, it's, I don't know how many subcontractors I've met on them jobs, but. You know, the sub-electric, sub this, sub the wells, so. And then they do in-house roofing and stuff like that, but there's a lot of subcontractors on this job, so.
Anything else?
No.
All right, so we go to managers' report.
All right, you got to approve that.
Approve what? I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the bid from Jimmy Harper in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars for the rehab of Wells nine and ten. And moved in second that we approved the low bid from Jimmy Harper Construction. In the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is there any further discussion?
What the difference between the two prices? Maybe I just, you guys. Is there a reason?
Because one bid higher than the other? I don't, I mean, it's like, I, I think they're both bid, both good bids, it's just some, like, making more profit than others, so.
So it's not a matter of, they, they have the same bids.
Everything's same. Certain type pump you have installed, certain type roofing, certain, the control panels, everything's exactly the same, so.
Your confidence in.
Absolutely. Yes.
Are you satisfied legally?
Yes, I'm satisfied.
I knew that. You went right down through the boxes. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the bid from Jimmy Harper Construction. For two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimous, all right?
I'll let the contractor know, and we'll, we'll get started on that, so. Moody's of Dayton is the one that's doing the wells anyway, and Moody's doing both, both companies, so. The electrical workers, I mean, was, the subcontractor for electrical workers, both companies really, so it's. Higher margin of profit.
Subs are the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like the work is the same.
Yeah.
But the administrative.
Correct.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Great, managers' report.
Uh, great. Uh, exciting news. We did get to hire two additional people. They were starting Monday morning, so I still have one vacancy. Very excited. We, odd age range, one's really young, one's not so much, so. Seem like two, two good additional employees. Go through the workout. A little bit started. One actually has, or has her C D Ls. So, yeah, it's real excited about that, because that's been an issue with us, individuals not having C D Ls, not being able to drive trucks. Seem like two good people, so. So I doubt, our lake's been terrible. No rhyme or reason. I know Parkersburg's having the same issues we are, and every town in Sinis drought areas had that same issue, so. Lot of service lines, the copper service lines have been issues. Today, we had. A leak down on Fourth Avenue off Thirty-second Street. That was a four-inch line and busted the knuckle. It's been repaired. So the guys, the rest of workforce, I think we're, everybody's out of vacation time, hopefully, so we'll get our workforce back. Get a full staff at least, and we'll, we'll be starting on. We'll be mowing pond run probably the first week of September, so you'll see the equipment out. Escavator with the flommer on, going to get ahead of the guys to weed eat, so. In the fall months, everything's starting to cool down a little bit. I noticed that last night was, was it last night? No, last night was last night. It was, sunset was after eight o'clock for another two hundred and fifty-eight days, so winter, winter is coming. I quote in Game of Thrones, but winter is coming, so, yeah, so. Hope it'll be general on us, but we're ready. Everything's good. We got the new equipment ready to go, so. We'll move along with our maintenance items and. Good shake. Sure. Sure.
And I know this is not, um, not here, your apartment, but, um, maybe somebody asked me how much longer the gas projects are going to take, and how far up are they?
They will be going to Forty-first Street. And, uh, it's by for, they said by another year, wasn't it? So. Yeah. Yeah. It's been a mess down there.
We've, we've had lots of fun with him.
Yeah.
I know people get excited about the traffic just early in Vienna, but, but people also get excited when you don't do those things.
Yeah.
Your water leak, you know, I mean, so you can't have it both ways, so we'd have to deal with this right now, because, as you know, I mean, it, you know, good.
I think they've caused about thirty of our leaks.
Yeah.
So, on service lines, and either they correct the copper, or they completely pull it out of the main, so, uh. It's not their fault. I mean, when I do a big project, I don't have a gas line to rip out, so, uh, they've been real good to work with, um, and I think they've done a great job on Grand Central coming up that lane, they've been moving along, just been with the paving projects going on, with them going on, and then the other contractor in it, Twenty-eighth Street, been the sidewalks in, it's just been a cluster, and, uh, detours everywhere, but it's gonna really reduce here real shortly, so, um, hopefully people just, you know, they've, they've moved along good pace, I've, I've been impressed.
I know, I know all the backwards, like...
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah, I, I even, I come down, went, come down to Twenty-eighth Street there, they got blocked and had to go back around, back through, and which was good, because I got to run across some really nice asphalt, we just fit down, so, yeah, uh. And that's, that, that probably turned out real well, it should finish up, hopefully, next week. I have to go back and repair section on Thirty-fourth Street, because twenty-six years I've been here, I've never broke a water line on Thirty-fourth Street until the day I paved and got it completed, and then the next day I broke water lines, so, for the next couple of days, so. And that, that happens, and the reason that happens is because the vibration roller. You pave, you run that big roller, it vibrates it, and it shakes in water lines, shakes houses, and we and real fortunate, we only had one. Unfortunately, it's on Thirty-fourth Street. And that, I thought that turn, project turned out really nice, uh, so. Twenty-fourth, Twenty-fourth Street's really nice. Eighth Avenue's turned out good, Forty-sixth Street's good. Church's looks nice, seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, fabulous.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And the contractor, I, there's an issue, the contractor parked some equipment on the church parking lot, Forty-sixth Street and Grand Central. They didn't have permission to, and, um, church is upset. Yeah, and, um, but the contractor did, said they, they apologized, and they come back in and resealed the whole parking lot and restriped it. And it absolutely looks beautiful. That, that parking lot hadn't looked that good for a long, long time, so.
Uh, just for the record,
Yeah.
last time that parking lot got seal coated,
Yeah.
I did it.
By hand?
Yes, sir, with a four, four-foot squeegee.
Right?
Yeah.
That couple years ago, or?
Uh, many years ago, okay? Yeah.
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 So, it looks, boy, it looks beautiful now, and it's, it's been, been a pretty good contractor to work with, it's, they've Thirty-fourth Street was a mess, I know when we did it, but they've, they've improved and understand about not blocking roads completely off. Next week, we are gonna block off woodland, uh, we're gonna do it Tuesday to pave, uh. We wanna get that done before school starts Wednesday, because people, I know, one way in, one way out in Vienna, so it's, uh, and that's, with school starting Wednesday, it's gonna be a high-traffic area, but after that, uh, we'll be taking counsel, uh, next meeting, hopefully, next Thursday, approval, line striking, so. Get that approved, and then come back and restrite the lines on the roads, so. I got off of tandem, sorry. Any other questions, so?
I appreciate it, and that's a couple of...
I'm just waiting my turn, you go, whenever you get ready, just let me know.
Questions, Jake?
Whenever you're ready, just let me know.
I'm ready, I'm ready, yeah.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So, we have an issue with a back truck.
Yes. Uh, what happened, it was an old back truck, the old, I call it old YLR, at, uh, two things happened, the pump, the water pump was, started leaking on the, the pump for the jetter. Started leaking, it's been leaking for a while, then we had some mechanical issues with the diesel uh, motor on that, so, um, Metheny's gonna have it for a while, so we decided, well, we'll go and take the pump off, take it back to the factory and see about having it rebuilt. Which we did, uh, we took it off, take the truck out to Metheny's, had it repaired down on the diesel section, which expensive too, uh, but, uh, they looked at the pump, and they said, it's, geez, that thing's twelve, fourteen years old, and it's wore out, wore out past it. They could rebuild it, they said it might last a month, might last a year, they're not gonna guarantee it for sixteen thousand, and where they could sell, so the new uh, newer model pump for eighteen thousand, so we elected to go with the newer model pump and their brand-new pump, so. Still need to rebuild something, and it's only gonna guarantee for a month, so. That'll be down, uh, they did have it in stock, um, Metheny's currently still has the truck, won't be back till next week, I'll, I'll the repair shop, and it had to do with the, uh, the turbo system, so.
But a replacement truck is what, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Uh, half a million dollars anymore.
Half a million dollars, wow.
So, we repaired this, and mechanically functional, it should be in good shape for eighteen hundred dollars, I think is what it was, or two thousand dollars repaired from Metheny's, and eighteen thousand for the new pump, so. That's your jetter, it's your pump, pressurizes the jetter system, so.
So, the other thing that I wanna tell everyone about is Craig and I went down and looked at a major stormwater issue in the lower end of Vienna. Uh, we fought this thing for years, and it's behind TJ Maxx, and all of that drainage area down there is in the city of Parkersburg. And so, the drains all go underneath the TJ Maxx building. Uh, so I reached out to Parkersburg, and Parkersburg put it out to bid, and Jimmy Harper was the low bidder for the city of Parkersburg
Really?
to renovate. They're gonna clean the banks, they're gonna put in all-new culverts and clean them out, and the whole nine yards.
Good.
So, that right there should be a major improvement for those people that live down on Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Eighth Street. I've seen pictures where, when that water backs up, it comes up three foot in their backyards.
Right.
So, anyway, that's been approved, and now it's just a matter of, uh, the paperwork that they sent me, says that they've got fifteen days to complete the job once they get the notice to proceed, so they'll, I'm sure they'll work on it before winter gets here. But anyway, that should make a big improvement in the lower end of Vienna, because it's, that's the only water outlet for that whole area down there, so that's a good thing. So. Um. All right. Anything, Joe? Steve? John? Nothing? Kim? Russell? Mike, hey, four point two, so we're... And that's good water too, Craig?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anyway, nothing.
Cheaper than this.
Oh, gosh. Lori, anything for you? All right. Craig?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you for attending today.